Is it the computer we're waiting on? Or are we just waiting on?
Yeah, it's doing a restart.
Okay.
It did enough.
Well, is there anything we can do without the computer? Do we need the computer?
Yes, we don't get to this point.
Do we need the computer for what we're going through at the beginning anyway? All you gotta do is gavel.
They can't gavel it.
I can't gavel it.
He can't gavel it. He can't gavel it because he's not been sworn in.
Yeah, well, he's a...
Oh, here, give the gavel to me. Give it to Shirley.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight before the actual meeting starts, the city council meeting tonight. We are having the ceremonial swearing-in of our new mayor, Jeff Reese. Here to perform that honor for us tonight is Senior Security Court Judge Audrey Duffy, a native and famous citizen of the city of Villarica. So we're honored to have Judge Duffy here to perform the ceremony on the ceremonial swearing-in. So if we could ask Mayor Reese to come down. And the justice, if you would, supply the open office.
Where should we stand?
I think.
Right here?
Right there in front of him.
Okay. If you would, please raise your right hand. I, Jeff Reese, do solemnly swear.
Maybe.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
The Bible?
The Bible.
Oh, I...
I'll say it, and then I won't say it, but the Bible. A Bible you brought.
Oops.
I, Jeff Reese, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will truly perform the duties of Mayor of the city of Villarica, Georgia, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I further swear that I am not the holder of any public money due to this state, unaccounted for, and that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, or any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of this state I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and if related by any circuit or district that I have been a resident there for the time required by the Constitution and laws of this state, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Judge Duffy, how many is that that you've done?
God, I don't know.
I was just trying to think how many times you've done. You probably have pulled the chains more at the high school than you've done this stuff.
Okay, I will officially call the meeting of December 6th, the City Council, Villarica, City Council meeting to order this Tuesday, December 6th, 2016. And the first thing we need to do is the invocation. I'm gonna ask Councilmen Best if y'all would please stand following the invocation. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Aye, yes, please. Lord, please bless this meeting and all participants involved. Please allow all parties to be friends and professional as we conduct the business of our city. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Hold on just a second. Let me make a change in that. I want to ask a young man to come up here. Carlos, would you come up here with me? As he's coming up, I want to tell y'all a little story. I'm gonna break with tradition here. This young man gives me hope, and he should give everybody in this room hope. Stand beside me over here, Carlos. Tell you a story about Carlos. I met this young man at Jay's inauguration, well, not his inauguration, at his party that he had the night of his election. And he came up to me, and he identified himself, and he shook my hand like a young man should. And he was very polite to me, but he went on to tell me about local politics. He told me about state politics. He told me a little bit about federal politics. And this is a very sharp man, and he would talk to me and engage me in conversation. He would always say, "Yes, ma'am," "No, ma'am," "No, sir," "Yes, sir." But the thing that really impressed me about him was that when he left, he would say, "Would you excuse me? I'm gonna go talk to some of the other guests." And I told Theresa, my wife, I said, "You know, that really gives me hope for the future because so many times you hear the bad things about young people now, and they don't care, and they're not engaged in their community and in their lives." And I have no doubt in my mind that this young man right here will be either standing where I'm standing one day or hopefully further up, because I would vote for him right now. I'll tell you this. This is Carlos Morales. Y'all give him a hand.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask Carlos to give us the lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before Carlos goes and sits down, I want to say one more thing about him. As we ended the evening, he was making his way around the room all night long, but as we left, I said, "Carlos, I'm gonna make a promise to you. If I ever become mayor of Villarica, I want you to stand up there in the front of the room with everybody." You remember that? We didn't think it was gonna happen, but it did, didn't it? Thank you, Carlos. Before I get started, if y'all would indulge me just a minute here, I'm gonna say a few things. Before I thank anybody else, I want to thank God for allowing me the chance to live in a great nation. Y'all know, most of you know my background. I was supposed to be an aborted baby, and I was raised by parents that adopted me, and God couldn't have chosen two better parents to raise me. My dad had a fifth-grade education. My mom had a sixth-grade education, and they taught me the meaning of life. They taught me right and wrong. They believed in education. My dad couldn't read and write until I was about 13 years old, and he learned to read on Louis Lamar and Zane Gray Western novels, if y'all remember those. And I said, "Dad, why is it so important for you to learn how to read?" And he said, "I want to read the Bible, son. Before I die, I want to read the Bible from cover to cover." And he did when I was about 17 years old. So he was my inspiration, and I know they're looking down from heaven now, but I want to thank my wife. Theresa, would you stand? She's gonna kill me for this.
She's supposed to hold the Bible when you're...
She has been my rock throughout this whole ordeal, and since we married, she has been such an inspiration to me. I'm gonna tell you, this lady gets up in the morning singing God's praises, and she goes to bed singing God's praises. And she says her devotion, "If y'all are not friends with Theresa Reese on Facebook, you're missing something. Please friend her and just be a part of her inspiration every morning, because I read it every morning she writes it." I want to thank my family, and we're gonna get photos, I guess, in just a minute, if y'all will indulge me, but my family's here tonight. I want to thank y'all. My two kids, Chris and Kim, would y'all stand? These are my babies. They're not babies anymore. And y'all's family, I've got my granddaughter Kelly Dawn, would you stand? And Stephen, would you stand? Stephen's the big one. I wish I'd have been his size when I played football. I wouldn't have got hurt so much. And my beautiful daughter-in-law, would you please stand? Tiffany? Thank y'all. It means so much for y'all to be here. And, sweetie, somebody else I want to recognize. This man has been beside me, and I've been beside him since we could walk. And we have fought, we have cried together, we have laughed together, and we have fished a whole lot together. Ronnie Pendergrass, would you please stand? This is my best friend in the whole world. He's a net man. That's what he said. Ronnie's the guy in the back of the boat when I say, "Ronnie, get the net." But he did a lot of netting. I did a lot of netting with his fish this year, but thank y'all so much for being here. My supporters, the people that voted for me, both candidates, would y'all please stand? Both candidates for mayor are here tonight. That is so great. Would y'all please stand? Thank y'all so much for being here. It means a lot. It really does. I want to thank my committee. Committee, would y'all stand? We're all gonna tear up here if we're not careful, and Twala will lead us in tear. But this committee, when I decided I would run for mayor, I said, "I can't do this by myself." And so, one by one, Theresa and I prayed for these people, and they all come to us, and I said, "Wow, what about John Hannaback? Wow, what about Clint Chance? What about Twala Fristad? What about Kimberly Stovall? Alan Martinez is not here tonight." Did I leave anybody off? I think, and Mike McPherson, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave you off, Mike, but you brought food in, so I wasn't gonna try to... But this committee, I'm telling you, when I say they worked, there's no telling how many hours these folks worked on putting campaign material together and putting brochures together, and Kimberly putting things on Facebook, and just keeping everything updated, and even to just saying, "That's not the right color tie," or "You need to change those shoes," or, you know, just all those were, that was all sound advice, and I thank y'all from the bottom of my heart. If I'm successful, it's because you folks were around me. So thank you so much. I want to thank the staff, Villarica, the ones that I worked with for almost 14 years, and I want to thank David Milliron personally for his help during this process and getting me up to speed. And I told him earlier, I said, "I'm gonna be looking at you every now and then to just make sure I'm moving in the right direction with the committee, I mean, with the meeting." So thank you for all your help, and thank you, Alicia, for everything that you've done. You've been so invaluable to me. And another friend in this audience, and I hate to single people out, but one person that has always been by my side through thick and thin, we've shared a lot of things together, Chief Mansour, thank you so much for your friendship. You have been a good friend to me, and I appreciate that. Former mayor and current mayor and council up here, Shirley Marshman, our former mayor. Thank you. Jay Collins, who couldn't be here tonight, you know, worked with Jay for his entire 12 years of service, and Monroe Spake was the mayor when I started working for Villarica back in 2001. So I learned a lot from these folks, and they all taught me a lot of things about life and about government. And quite frankly, I learned, I cut my teeth on working here in Villarica. Most of you know that I've been in government for 36 years with Cobb County and with Douglas County, but really, those were my growing experiences. I really learned what I know here in Villarica, and that's because of the mayor and council that I worked with and because of the staff that I had working around me. So just everybody, if I left anybody out, it certainly wouldn't, you know, because I meant to. And there's somebody else I want y'all to remember in your prayers tonight, and that's someone that I recognize very upfront, is the lady that brought me to Villarica and sold me my house on 120 Harrell Road, where I still live to this day, and that's Hazel Roberts. And she's undergoing surgery. She broke her hip. She's having hip surgery, I believe, and so she's in the hospital. So if y'all would, please remember her in your prayers. So I just want to say just a very few things. I know I'm going out of line here probably, but if y'all will just indulge me a little bit, I just want to say a very few things about what you should expect out of me as a mayor. Y'all have heard throughout my career here, the ones that have known me for 14 years, that I am a big believer in quality of life. And quality of life touches every one of us, whether it's in crime prevention, or recreation, or events, or driving down the road without potholes in it, or anything that you can think of that's quality of life, that's what I'm about. And I pledge to you as your mayor that I will always keep that in mind, that a good community is really measured by the quality of life of its citizens. And that's gonna be a resounding thing that you hear from me over and over, and so just remember that. You know, we're gonna experience growth in Villarica, and I want us to manage that growth. There's a difference in manage and control. We're gonna manage that growth effectively. We can't stop growth. Most of us here aren't original Villaricans. Most of us moved here from somewhere else, so it's really not practical to close the door once we're here. It is practical to expect that we manage that growth, though, and that's what I'm gonna try to focus on. I want us all to work together, not only this council, with this city manager, but I want us to work together with other cities and municipalities in this county and surrounding counties. We're not an island. We're a group. We're a group of communities all in West Georgia, and we need to all work better, because I think if we all work together, because if we all work together, we work better. And so I'm gonna try to do that. Folks, the decisions we make up here in front of these people out here that we serve affect their livelihoods, and they'll affect the decisions and the place that this city is 20 years, 30 years, 50 years from now. I want us to always remember that. I'm gonna try to always remember that you folks are the ones we're working for. And I've been a civil servant my entire life, and I know what that means, and so I'm about doing y'all's job. I'm gonna put my cards, if I already haven't done that, out on the front table out there that has my personal cellphone number on it. Feel free any time of the day or night, and I mean that sincerely. If you have a question, text me, email me. Easy-to-remember email address, jreese@villarica.org. There's also an email address, mayorjeffreese@gmail.com. And again, my cards are out on the table out there. Give me a call. I've already started getting the calls that Jay Collins said I would get about dogs being, you know, barking at 11 o'clock at night and all those calls. So I expect that, and I can't promise you that I'll stop the dog from barking, but I'll promise you I'll take your call. I want to be fiscally responsible, and a part of that is I want to be openly transparent. You know, government is about you. It's about the people, and I'm gonna be transparent as your mayor, and I'm gonna expect the same out of the council people that serve with me up here. And I want to be responsive to the community, always responsive to the community. And y'all will learn this about me. One of the things that I believe very strongly is that it's important to set goals. And as important to set goals, it's important to achieve goals. And one of the things that you'll hear me say over and over and over in the next four years and perhaps after that is plan the work and work the plan. And I believe very strongly that that's what we need to do as a community. And so with that, those are some things I wanted to say, and I look forward to y'all. Y'all eat all the cookies up outside out there, because I can't eat them. So eat all the cookies or put them in your pockets, or Carlos, you take those cookies home. You got that? You're in charge of cookies. Okay, back to the order at hand here. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda or any changes to the agenda?
Same.
Here a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? There's one change to the agenda that has to do with the consent agenda. There's a council request to remove permitting 2017. Our call license renews for the city as an individual item.
Okay. Any further discussion on the agenda? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we now will have a ceremonial presentation and number one, and she is going to be mad at me for doing this, but I would like to ask Ms. Shirley Marshman to move forward, and we're gonna recognize you. For those of you that don't know, Shirley Marshman's been a councilperson for as long as I can remember, but she stepped up when Jay Collins stepped down to run for the House seat. She stepped up and was our mayor for a few months, and she was in the double and did a really good job. And you have been a mentor to me personally, not only as the mayor, but just as a person in general. And thank you for your service to the city, and we would like to honor you with something.
Y'all want to come down here, associate?
This is a resolution. Whereas the Honorable Shirley Marshman has served a long and distinguished career as a member of the Villarica City Council, and whereas during calendar year 2016, Councilwoman Marshman was selected by her fellow council members to serve as Mayor Progen for the city, pursuant to the city's charter, and whereas due to the sequence of events, Councilwoman Marshman was elevated to the position of the first interim mayor of Villarica pending the recent specialization of field office of mayor, and whereas Shirley Marshman used her experience and her spiritual blessings bestowed upon her to fill her role as interim mayor and leader of the city with grace, dignity, good humor, and wisdom. I'm not the good humor, but... Now therefore, be hereby resolved by the mayor and her fellow council members that on behalf of the citizens of Villarica, they express their gratitude and thanks to Shirley Marshman for her dedicated service and leadership during her tenure as interim mayor. It is further resolved that this resolution be recorded on the permanent minutes of the city so that future generations will know of Ms. Marshman's contributions to the advancement of the city of Villarica during this unprecedented and uncertain time. It so resolved on this sixth day of December of 2016. Signed by me and all the council members. A ceremonial gavel to present you with.
Don't use it on Mr. Marshman.
Thank you all for thinking of me, and I will do my best from the best of my terms as Councilwoman to do the best job that I can for my constituents, not just one, but the interested people. Thank you.
Our next presentation is to Keep Carol Beautiful. This is the part of Keeping Me Straight. Just wanted to let everybody know that the city of Villarica received an environmental excellence award today from Keep Carol Beautiful for extraordinary dedication and commitment of time and resources to make Carroll County a cleaner and better community for everyone. So congratulations, staff, and everybody that had something to do with this.
Aye, aye.
Okay, this is the next person that's gonna be mad at me. I'd like to ask our city clerk to come forward, please.
Goody, goody, goody. Goody, goody, goody.
They released a few people out of jail back there, so...
See, you didn't know that, did you?
Yeah, that must not be.
Now, I understand that as city clerk, you have a special access to information record, so the birth is expected when? So I know that you know that we didn't really bring you up here to talk about your grandchild, although that's all that we talked about in the office. She's beside herself and excited. But from the city administration, it gives me great pleasure in letting the city council, the mayor, and you, the members of the public, in on a big accomplishment by Ms. Elisa Doyle. She recently has successfully achieved status as a certified municipal clerk from the state of Georgia, and Ms. Elisa Doyle will actually be officially bestowed that honor in February at the Georgia Clerks Education Institute. Couple things about that recognition. This is a program that's administered by the Carl Vinson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia. Ms. Elisa Doyle has actually accomplished 101 hours of instructional hours in public administration, and it's not just a matter of attending those classes, it's actually assessments that she has to pass to show that she is truly knowledgeable.
Listening.
So those assessments, she has successfully passed all the assessments, and she has also successfully completed the requisite two years of being in a public administration position. We are searching the records, but we do believe that Ms. Elisa Doyle is the first certified municipal clerk for the city of Villarica. So with that, the mayor has a presentation for you. So please join me in congratulating her. And she will be accepting those honors again at a special ceremony in February, at which point she'll also start her master certification program. So the education doesn't stop here. Ms. Elisa, it's always a gem and a pleasure to have you. You've served the city and the council well, so congratulations and thank you. And I know you didn't have the flowers with you. Thank you.
We've been waiting back there.
They're waiting in the jail.
Do you want to hold your flowers or anything?
The flowers gone wilt.
Oh, my goodness.
Mr. Mayor, you have some special guests here that would like to make a presentation. So at this point, you'll now understand why Clint's actually in a suit. So earlier, you heard our new mayor bragging on the committee members, and I very appreciate that, but I want to brag on Jeff a little bit now, and want to talk about how awesome he has been to work with all the committee members here. And when Jeff first called me on the phone and said he was gonna be running for mayor and wanted me to serve as his campaign chairman, I was very honored. One of the first words out of his mouth was, you know, "I'm doing this for the right reasons. I'm doing this for the city of Villarica. This is not about me. This is not about any other individuals on the committee. This is about helping the city move forward." And so that really set the tone for the committee moving forward from there, and we really, really became such a close-knit family. And I think as chairman, you're always trying to find ways to streamline things or move things along or manage, and one of the first things that I thought about when we were meeting every week the first couple of weeks, I thought, "God, I don't want to burn the committee members out." I was meeting every week, and I'd gotten to a point where I was gonna suggest maybe we need to skip every other week, and the meetings kept getting longer and longer, and we were more into what we were doing and trying to find tune. And I said, "Man, I'm liable to get kicked off the committee if I suggest meeting once every two weeks instead of every single week." But that just shows you the camaraderie that we built here, and I think it was Mike that brought up this point, as we were promoting all the different things that Jeff had had his hand, footprint in throughout the city, talking about the mill, building that, or the railroad, over at the Gold Museum. We really realized we weren't just promoting Jeff, we were promoting the city of Villarica, and we're just very honored that someone was able to run for mayor for this position that had so much experience. So it was an honor not only to promote Jeff's footprints, but to promote the city itself. And so with that said, we wanted to have something made for you, and this is your very own gavel that we had printed here for Mayor Jeff Reese, Villarica, Georgia. Does have November 2016, since that's when you officially won the mayor's race. We hope that this will be a testament and a reminder to you of all the things that you wanted to do for the city, and we know that certain options won't always come easy. You'll be faced with difficulties, but as long as you keep your mind focused on moving the city forward, we know that you will do your very best. We hope this is a reminder of you, of not only the past support of this committee, but the future support of this committee moving forward. We hope it's a reminder to you of your commitment of wanting to work with all the different council members, the management and staff, that we know that you want to do that. And ultimately, we hope it's a reminder to you of the power bestowed to the mayor's office by the people of the city of Villarica. And so it gives us great honor on behalf of all the committee members...
We had a great time, and we had some fun times, too. And Twala, do you care if I tell one story? I've got to tell this story, please. The Gold Rush Parade. I have to, this is, this is a, this is visual, but it also has to do with moving around. So, Twala, if y'all know Twala, Twala is a very energetic person, and that's the politically correct way. She is very energetic, and she came up with some of our better ideas, and I think the whole committee would agree with that. And one of them was, "I'm a Jeffries fan," and that was a fan that said, "I'm a Jeffries fan. Great idea, right?" And I said, "Yeah, we'll do that." So, we printed a thousand fans of them. And our plan was to get those thousand fans out at the Gold Rush Festival in this past September. And so, everything worked well, my truck was there, it was all shined up, and, you know, all the boxes were sitting in the back of my big truck that's kind of hard, none of us can really get over it except for Clint. And so, we started the parade route, and John Hattelbeck was our driver, and he missed his call, and I'm pretty sure he should have been a nice car driver, because to say that John drove fast is an understatement. We were running to catch up with John in the parade route. And so, we had these fans, and we were all giving out the fans, and people were, when they saw we were giving out fans, "Oh, great fans, give us some." And so, we were giving out, one at a time to start with, and I would say, "Hey, I'm Jeffries," well, it got past that. We got to the point where it was, "Here, how many family members do you have? Eight, here's eight families." And it was going that fast, and we ran out of fans, and we were like, and I'm gonna use you as an example. Twala would come up to me and said, "We need more fans, we need more fans." And I'm like, "What, what?" And she says, "I think we need more fans, I can't see them in the back of the truck." So, Clint, as John's driving down the road, this is a visual, Clint's hanging over the side of my truck, getting fans out and just passing them back as we go. So, that was just one of the moments, and it's one of those you had to be there things, but we had such a great time that when we decided that the committee would stop meeting every Monday, I told Teresa, I said, "Are we supposed to be doing something this Monday night?" And then she said, "Well, no, no committee meeting," so... But thank you all again for everything that you do, so much.
Thank you.
David, would it be appropriate to have my family come up now and do both of those? And I hope we have a really fast meeting, and this won't be for long.
We'll talk really fast.
That was a subliminal message. My family, would y'all come up?
She says she gonna get there now.
Is that everyone?
No.
No, we have one more.
Two more.
This is the only person that ever out fishes me, other than Ronnie, I can't one. Oh, well, that's right, she doesn't...
All right. Councilor, can I ask you one favor, can move to your heart? All right, you're good. Thank you. No, you're good, you're good. All right, smile. You want to do one with...
Yes, and I also want to do one with Ronnie. Ronnie, if you want to...
Hey, Alyssa.
If y'all wonder what he was asking me when he was whispering to me, he wanted to know what to do, this is scout pledge. That's how sharp this guy is.
I might be in trouble, I don't remember that.
All right. Ronnie, where you at? Come on up. Get the net.
We're still in some...
You can have water, Brett. I want a little bit. I'll play. Where's the net?
Are you ready? There's one. There's two. There's three. There's four.
And y'all welcome to stay out of this whole meeting, but feel free anytime you want to leave. Slip out.
They will.
I'm gonna take you up on that.
Now, I know what deferred to the city manager meant. I wondered what that meant.
Would you like your new gavel?
Yeah, I'll, it's signed up, you just kind of close that up now. I'm just gonna, I'm kidding. Okay, all right, here we go. Approval of the minutes. Have y'all had a chance to look over the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the November the first minutes we were given, but we have not received the tenth, so I'd like to delay approval to the tenth.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes of November the first, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, second made by Shirley Marchman. Any discussion? Not all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Okay, and I'm assuming, how will we do the November the tenth minutes? We'll just bring those up at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, council updates. Not everyone at once.
We don't have anything.
Nobody has anything to say?
Not yet.
Wow.
Don't keep asking, move right along. You might come up with something.
You should have speeded it up, didn't you?
Should have speeded it up. Okay, city manager's report. David?
Easy. Okay. The computer seems to be doing a Microsoft update, so we won't have a visual presentation, but luckily before you, you have the printed presentation. So, I will start with the Chief Street rail grade crossing. Just for those not familiar, Norfolk Southern is in the midst of a high priority safety project and is in the process of cleaning site distances at all rail grade crossings in the corridor between Atlanta, Birmingham, and New Orleans. In fact, very recently, last week, they were overdoing the same in Douglasville. The project involves the clearing of all vegetation taller than one foot above the ground line in an envelope that measures roughly 500 feet, and its tracks in each direction from a grade crossing or both sides of the track. Previously, a presentation was given to the council of some options that Norfolk Southern provided to the city regarding its Chief Street crossing and the railroad park. Option one was that the city could remove and/or relocate all the affected vegetation. That means that all vegetation would have to be removed from the subject envelope originally. The deadline was November 1st. The railroad extended that deadline to December 1st at the request of the city council, so the public could be informed and a town hall meeting can be, could be held, which the council did. Option two was, instead of the city removing the vegetation, that the city could do nothing and Norfolk Southern would remove all the vegetation, thus eliminating the landscape park atmosphere in this area. And then, option three was, forget about touching the park at all, the city could simply agree to the closing of Chief Street, and if this alternative was selected, all existing landscape or vegetation could be, remain as is in the park, and the park atmosphere could be maintained. They'd offered incentives that originally started at 50,000 with a matching of 7,500 from the state. They later increased that to 60,000. They also said the real estate department would be willing to take a look at reducing the lease fees and/or area leased, which is this area that is the railroad park. And they also stated that the city would still be eligible for the $7,500 matching. The Georgia Department of Transportation, as part, after the public hearings were done, had agreed to go in and conduct an evaluation of the Chief Street rail grade crossing according to what's known as the Highway Rail Grade Crossing Safety Evaluation Form. That is a 12-page form, and per GDOT, the rail grade crossing, any rail grade crossing that scores five or more points are eligible for closure if requested by the railroad. GDOT has now shared that information from its assessment with both the city and Norfolk Southern, so both entities now have the same information. Regarding the Chief Street rail grades crossing, that crossing scored nine points with the following adversely affecting the overall safety. The first was roughly about four points because of the high-profile hump crossing. Additional points were levied against the crossing because of the number of freight trains per day and the overall speed of those trains. Points were also assessed because of the number of passenger trains per day and the overall speed. Also taken into consideration, and points were assigned because of the five-year vehicle trap, vehicle and train crash history for that location. Again, you're talking about nine points, they're stating that anything with five points or greater is a recommendation for closure. Based on that information and extensive discussions with everybody involved, the staff recommendation is to communicate to Norfolk Southern an acceptance of option two, which is simply to have the railroad at its own expense come in and perform the clear cutting that it says that is necessary on its property. Specifically, the city could do nothing and Norfolk Southern will remove all vegetation, thus eliminating the landscape park atmosphere in this area. The rationale behind the staff recommendation is that the city could go in on its own dime and perform those services, but again, you would be at the beck and call of approval from the railroad. The railroad may come back and say, "Hmm, not enough, go back and do more." So, you may potentially just go in there and do the work, and there's no net gain to the city. The second rationale on that is, is why expense the cost on the city's part? The railroad's already said that it's property and that it will do that. And then, hopefully, by accepting one of the three options, in this case, option number two, the railroad in good faith gave the city three options, and by selecting that option, the railroad would then stay any further request, and that crossing should remain open. So, that's the end of that part of the report. The next report is with respect to North Loop Bypass Project. At the work session, we talked about the fact that the Georgia Department of Transportation is requesting the city agree to the installation of roundabouts on the 11.2 million dollar project, where the proposed roads intersect with State Road 101, Industrial Boulevard, and Rockmark Road. Currently, that is a three-way stop. The second roundabout would be at State Road 61, just north of Harrell Road. According to the current projected traffic count data, the State Route 101 Industrial Board, Industrial Boulevard at Rockmark Road intersection qualifies for a four-way traffic signal. However, the State Route 61 location does not. GDOT, in accordance with the Federal Highway Administration adopted guidelines, the agency is required to consider roundabouts ahead of any installation of traffic signals. Unfortunately, for the public, a couple overheads, if we get those momentarily, we'll gladly show those, but it shows the design and locations of those roundabouts. All right, so I mentioned last week that there would be calls for engineering and environmental studies, and staff met with the entire GDOT team and the engineering staff last week, and the state is estimating that the overall engineering and environmental studies should be budgeted at about $200,000. The city has an agreement with GDOT that says that engineering and environmental studies are to be conducted at the cost of the city. During that meeting, staff was able to reach a tentative agreement with GDOT since its engineering and its experts are requesting the roundabouts and believe that they're in the best interest of the city and overall safety. The agency has agreed to reimburse the city for the cost of the additional engineering and environmental studies. So, what GDOT is saying is that it is agreeable to entering into an additional agreement with the city that says if you do all of the engineering and the environmental studies necessary for the two roundabouts, they will pay for any additional land acquisition, right-of-way acquisition, and will reimburse the city 100% of the cost to do the engineering and the environmental studies, which is that $200,000 figure. Now, there's always pluses and minuses. If we currently, all engineering has been done for potential traffic signals, GDOT is saying that the 61 corridor does not meet any criteria whatsoever for traffic signals, and therefore, has to be a roundabout. The city does have an option or say with the Industrial Boulevard 101, but GDOT is aggressively pushing the roundabout, and so, is offering sort of a carrot. We'll pay for 100% of the engineering. Basically, if you decide you want to split it, then we still have a contract, and we still then have to pay, then we would have to pay 50% of that, which is the 100,000 for just the one intersection per the contract, and that would not be reimbursable. If, for the additional potential right-of-way acquisition and roundabouts, the state is estimating that there would be approximately a 10-month delay to the overall project, but they believe that the roundabouts are significant enough, they want to get the project done, so they are looking to give additional benefit to the city. So, they have instructed the city that they would get back to us within the next two weeks because this council has already authorized in its 2016 meeting phase committing $100,000 towards the necessary BAT mitigation. The state is looking to have this as a state-funded project versus a federal-funded, and is hopeful that it may be able to get a stay on the BAT mitigation. That agreement has never been executed, it's only there in principle, so by having it as state-funded, there's a possibility that that 100,000 would be negated as well. So, as far as the staff recommendation, the staff recommendation is to accept the GDOT engineer recommendations that the roundabouts are the best option, and have the state reimburse the city for all engineering and environmental studies. That's a reimbursement of 200,000, and then, hopefully, if it goes state-funded, now that it's moved from the Federal Highway Transportation Authority to the Corps of Engineers, we are going to be optimistic that we can also save the additional 100,000 on the BAT mitigation with it being a state-funded project as opposed to a federal-funded project. So, those are the two city manager staff reports. I'll gladly answer any questions from the council at this time.
I do have a comment that I want to make. I sat back there for many years, and this roundabout's been in existence since before I moved to Villareca, and I would just ask, David, that as we get these requests for different studies, realizing that most of that money goes to one...
towards the necessary BAT mitigation. The state is looking to have this as a state-funded project versus a federal-funded and is hopeful that it may be able to get a stay on the BAT mitigation. That agreement has never been executed, it's only there in principle. So by having it as state-funded, there's a possibility that that $100,000 would be negated as well. So as far as the staff recommendation, the staff recommendation is to accept the GDOT engineer recommendations that the roundabouts are the best option and have the state reimburse the city for all engineering environmental studies. That's a reimbursement of $200,000 and then hopefully if it goes state-funded, now that it's moved from the Federal Highway Transportation Authority to the Corps of Engineers, we are going to be optimistic that we can also save the additional $100,000 on the BAT mitigation with it being a state-funded project as opposed to a federal-funded project. So those are the two city manager staff reports. I'll gladly answer any questions from the council at this time.
I do have a comment that I want to make. I sat back there for many years and this roundabout's been in existence since before I've moved to Villarica and I would just ask David that as we get these requests for different studies, realizing that most of that money goes to one firm, that we make sure that that's something that DOT has asked us for? I'm not saying that that hasn't happened in the past, but I know that we, you know, every time previous city managers have come to the council and said, "Well, we've got to do this study now, we've got to do a BAT study." And then the latest one was, "Well, the elevation of the road has changed and so now we need to do another study on that." That money basically goes to one company and I'm not accusing that company of doing anything wrong, but I would just hope that our due diligence would be that we would check with DOT and make sure that that in fact is something that they have requested.
And I believe there was, I think either nine or 10 GDOT individuals in attendance and only one from the engineering company and these, every request that has been on my watch has been a GDOT requested request from the project management team.
It seems though maybe the third or the fourth Indiana BAT study. You know, we still have not got any comments back on the South Carolina possum. Now they, I, we just have not got that back yet. Seriously though, is there any question or problem with having two roundabouts within 100 yards of each other?
GDOT obviously as a quick response has looked at a roundabout at Punkin Town and then of course this one will be north of that, which would be north of Harrell Road. That conversation did come up. In GDOT's defense, they said that the Punkin Town investment that they're willing to pay for is not a long-term fix for that intersection, but for overall safety and to move traffic, their engineering staff believes that it is the best fix at this time and they have modeled the traffic flow between those two and they show, again, modeling is one thing, being in cars is a different, but, but their engineers are standing behind their overall designs.
Thank you.
So if we front, if we front all the money on these studies, they're going to reimburse us?
Yes, Councilwoman.
And then possibly on what we had to pay, I call it punishment, it's kind of like buying your way, the $100,000 on the Indiana BAT, because that's not even a study, that's kind of like, so that we can move forward, we give you $100,000. They might give us that back too.
We not actually had, give it back, not require us to move forward. What they are saying that they believe that as a state-funded project, that they'll be able to better manage the project and the timing of the project and when the construction occurs, whereas under the federal guidelines, we were doing a mitigation so that we were narrowing the restrictions on when construction could be done. So in this instance, they, they are aggressively trying to get clearance to not require us to do the mitigation program. Originally, the city was on the hook for doing quarterly studies. The mitigation was the better cost-effective way under the federal guidelines.
So last question is this, what did they have to do in order to turn it into a state project? Because I'm assuming the reason they may not have to require all this is because they're getting it away from EPA. That's where I'm figuring the environmental impacts are usually EPA. How did they turn it into a state project that gives us more control here rather than the federal guidelines?
There's federal dollars that come through and then the state board and then other transportation boards such as Greta can actually then assign those projects federal dollars or state dollars. These ones are going to be funded through state Greta dollars. So Greta has already made an authorization, now they have to make an assignment to the actual dollar amount. So simply saying we're not using the federal dollars. Now actually, the Georgia requirements for environmental is actually a little more stringent, so we still have to go through some of those hoops than the federal. The difference is that was the mitigation that under the Federal Highway Authority was limiting when construction could be done or you could do these quarterly BAT studies, but if you found any BAT, you were going to have to shut down.
Okay.
So it gets complicated, but, but.
Yeah, but I remember us covering all the cost factor on those others.
Question over 10 months, does that mean all activity grounds to halt or we have activity underway out there?
No, sir. Actually, they said that they would, we talked in, in great detail about additional parcels that need to have some additional engineering, also some additional review. We talked about specific properties that are in the right-of-way acquisition. We expanded some of the right-of-way acquisition. So all of that is sort of going simultaneous. You're just simply not having the bulldozer construction going during that 10 months, sir. So there would still be activity, in fact, there's considerable activity that's been going on for the last 60 days, but all of that has been part of these required studies that the engineers and the project manager have, have required.
So, so if I'm hearing you right, basically if we, if we delay this by 10 months, we have a chance to save the taxpayers a considerable amount of money, almost $200,000 and then everything's going to still be happening behind the scenes, there won't be any bulldozers like you said on site.
Yes, sir.
Nothing's changed about the scope. We're still doing the North Loop, we're not talking about the East Loop, we're talking about the North Loop.
There's no East Loop, there can't be an East Loop because still in the federal documents is still filed, this council would actually have to change the definition of Punkin Town and Mere Lake Boulevard as, as other than a local road. So there's no change. The 10-month delay, you would look at the road opening, I believe if I don't mistake the timeframe, was 2020 at the latest.
Thank you, David. And I had asked David also today, we're going to, I don't know what y'all's opinion of roundabouts are, but it just, it's sort of like controlled chaos when I see them. You just sort of enter hoping everybody else knows what they're doing and you move on through. So, you know, I have some, I have some, some concerns about both of those intersections and what about, what a, a three-way roundabout will do. So I have asked David to, to research that and try to find a traffic count similar to those two intersections and he and I will go and video those and, and come back and, because I want to see how they work myself, because I live, I not only am the mayor, I actually live in that area, so I want to see how those roundabouts work as well, so.
Don't you think also, just on public education, with the fact that you can put videos online and send them out an email and people can, we can help educate people, how do you use these things? I mean, some of a, I've used a lot of them, so I'm a little bit, but there are some that are a little bit more complicated and it helps, if people are educated and know how to use it, everything goes a lot smoother. So maybe we can just do education.
Anybody that's gone to Arbor Place Mall and gone out the east side.
That one's complicated.
That's a bad example.
That is a roundabout.
Than Whitesburg and those others.
But I haven't seen Rex over there.
Down Highway 5, that one's not complicated. That mall one is, that's the worst out of any of them.
Yeah, it's awful.
Right there in Douglasville with the Dr. Blue, the eye doctor, it's a roundabout right there and it's just simple.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Any other council comments? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, the city clerk has the computer up and running. I do have the two diagrams that I'd like to show to the council and the public. The council has it in your packet, but the public hadn't seen this. So there's two diagrams for a, the two locations so that the public can familiarize where we're looking. This is the proposed three-point roundabout, this would be the State Route 61. If you were to go north on 61 from Harrell Road, if you look to your left, you'll see a very, very large Ashbrook Village sign on your left and then you'll, you should see some stakes in the ground and markings. That is actually where the proposed road is to come out and intersect with 61. So this is actually that roundabout coming out of what the current woods is and then you see the north-south 61. So that's a, the three-point roundabout for Dallas Highway. The second one that you have here is a little more involved. This is designed to address all of the truck traffic, which is a double lane route to come in as a roundabout. So what it does is it allows, this is at 101 and Industrial and Rockmart, which allows trucks to actually come in and if they're going in and making a right or left, they have dedicated lines. If they're actually going through, then they actually have dedicated lanes closer to the roundabout. So this is a, a four-point entry roundabout. They do offer the city the option, they have a standard beautification process, but if the city wanted to go a little further with some welcome signage or things of that that are breakaway, the GDOT has specific requirements. So these roundabouts in the center, they would actually landscape them based on their baseline and they're supposed to be giving me some information on that. And then if the city wants to go over and above that and do signage or, you know, put a statue of the mayor or someone in the middle, it's got to be a breakaway, so if somebody hits it, it breaks away. But, but it is possible to do that as long as it doesn't obstruct the, the view. Yeah, thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, David. Okay, we have reached that time of the meeting where we allow public comment. I would ask anyone that wants to give public comment to come forward, please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
I've already filled out the sheet, John Hannaback, 3106 Gophers Way. I was born and raised in Indiana, I never saw that, so be that as it may. Just want to make some general comments. I don't expect the council to respond to any of these, they never do, so this would not be a change. So I'll go through these fairly quickly. We've had quite a bit of rain last week, two inches last Thursday, another two inches today. There has been discussion about going to Level 3. I encourage the council and the mayor to pursue Level 3. All the long-range forecasts that I have heard indicate this is going to be a long, dry winter. So I encourage you to continue to pursue the Level 3 and to educate consumers in how to handle these things. This will come up a little bit later, but I retain, I encourage the council to retain the written draft of the charter as Mr. McLean has, has proposed it. I'd like to see some things added to it. I'd like to see a revision, this is really not in the charter, but revision of the tenure for planning and zoning. That really is covered in UDC, but right now, planning and zoning commissioners are limited to one year, renewable every year. I'd like to see that changed to be at least consistent with what's going on with the, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Also, I would like to see the charter considered term limits. That may not be very popular with you, but I would like to see those considered. I had the opportunity to tour the passive park a couple of weeks ago. That passive park is dangerous as it currently stands. It needs to be as a minimum posted. It's dangerous for anybody to walk in there, there are ruts, there are rocks, there are currently deer stands that are standing in that passive park as a minimum. I think the council and the city needs to, to post that park. This park now belongs to the city, so anything that happens in there is going to be the liability of the city. I have asked on several occasions to clean up the trash mess on Connors Road at SRS. It has not been done and now that we've had the rain, what a mess that is. So we encourage the city to look into cleaning that, that up. I'm sorry to hear the decision made tonight or the potential to go along with the railroad. I understand the, the city's concern, but it's going to devastate what we had as a city approved for the RSVP program and I hate to see that happen. We as a council and as a city have got to stop spending money that we do not have and we are doing a lot of this. Very pleased to hear we'll retain $200,000 tonight, but we've got to look at things like Hart House, these roundabouts. I don't think this is going to be the end of the monies being spent on those. The police barracks, these are monies that we do not have available and I think you've, as a council, have got to, to really consider how we're spending our money. And lastly, please tomorrow, December 7th, remember Pearl Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. And I promised I would do that, I've heard people get up and speak and public comment and then just go sit down and never hear anything and there's a reason why council does not engage those comments because the meetings would go on forever and, but someone from staff will be returning, giving you answers to those questions that you had. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll close this portion of the meeting and we will go to the consent agenda. Now, we have removed one of those items, so will we vote on that separate at this time or?
I think, I think you would vote on that after you do the consent agenda.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we've approved the consent agenda? So move.
Mr. Mayor, only on advice of the city attorney previously, if we can just simply read the items in the record for the minutes and then at that time, if you take a vote. And then the other thing is although this is there for the public, just mentioning to the public that all items were thoroughly discussed by the council, it's December 1st, 2016 work session and the council directed staff to place each on the consent agenda. By putting it on the consent agenda, the council is basically saying that no further discussion is necessary and that they're all in agreement with the passage of these items. The first is an ordinance, this is a Villarica Soil Erosion Sentimentation and Pollution Control Ordinance. The second is street naming resolutions, request for official street name designations. The first being Jay Crowder Drive, the second being Laugh Lane, the third being Boggs Road. Under open records, this is a resolution to adopt the Georgia Archives Local Government Records Retention Schedule for the purpose of records retention in the city of Villarica. And the last is council appointments, the first being for the Villarica Development Authority. This is a reappointment of Mr. Dale Swartzkoff for a four-year term. Also for the Main Street Advisory Board, this is a reappointment of Mr. Carl Peabody for a four-year term, Matthew Monahan for a four-year term and Mr. Michael Young for a four-year term. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. I'll get used to it eventually, I promise. Tab B, Public Works. I didn't see, we hadn't finished this. I moved to accept the consent agenda. Thank you, thank you. Have a move in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Now we have one we pulled out.
Now we're going to go back and discuss the item that was removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, this is the permitting for the 2017 alcohol license renewals for the city of Villarica. This was simply put, brought out not for further discussion, but for voting purposes by one council member unless another council member so needs to discuss the items. This is the revised list, there were a couple duplicates on the work session, so this is the finalized list. Each business named is currently operating in the city and has successfully met all criteria for renewal, subject to approval by the city council. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the renewal.
Second, I have a motion in a second to approve. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Now, tab B, and I don't see Pete, so David, are you going to handle this?
Yes, sir, I'll be filling in for Mr. Zobannis. Pardon me? No, no, no. At the work session, the city council was given information on the current conditions of the drought. Also, I shared with you a news report that our Public Works Director participated in yesterday. It's ironic to be talking about the drought while you, while you've got an umbrella in the middle of the rain and I told Pete that the folks at the state were going to be laughing at him, but it is what it is. The reality is, as of right now, even with the rainfall that we've gotten, unless we get approximately 10 inches of additional rain, as Mr. Hannaback has said, we, we are in this for the long term. We did reach out to the meteorologists at the National Weather Center here in Petrie City in Atlanta just to see if any real true pattern changes have changed for the winter. They continue to say that we're going to remain in drought conditions for the foreseeable future and that, that it is still the recommendation of the public. future, and that it is still the recommendation of the Public Works Director to seek a level three conditions for the purpose of the counsel of the public. Level one requires simple public water systems, such as the City of Villarica, to educate customers about conditions and encourages conservation. So in Latem's term, the city and the region started to, and the heart, ground zero of this drought is actually in Alabama, so you can assign blame there. We're just the benefactor, but when you really talk about the ground zero of the drought, it's actually west of us here in Alabama, and that when we started going into the drought in April, May, June, et cetera, when the state finally requested any limitations, they only gave us level one authorization, and that was for us to inform all of our customers that we were short on water and pleased to conserve. Unfortunately, at that time, the city was already further into drought conditions with its surface water, and so we asked the public to do some voluntary conservation, and unfortunately, our water usage actually went up. The one point that I do want to iterate is, the City of Villarica is not going to run out of water. We do indeed have agreements in place with the Carroll County Water Authority and the Douglas County Water Authority, so we can buy as much water as they can provide, and in most recent meetings, they have about 18 months' supply without tapping their groundwells. However, as predicted, when Lake Lanier started to go down well below full pool, the legislators got together and a little pressure was applied, and the governor came out aggressively and asked for level two. What that does is it limits outdoor watering to two days a week on an odd-even schedule. Even-numbered addresses are able to water on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., and odd-numbered addresses may water Thursdays and Sundays from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. No water for outdoor fountains, car washes, or power washing of homes is permitted. However, what's exempted is all water use for commercial purposes, where in fact, it's their primary business need or function. The city is requesting a level three. Level three prohibits all outdoor irrigation of landscapes. Food gardens may be watered between 4:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. Silk Road hoses and drip irrigation may be used at any time. Hand-watering allowed during designated hours. Golf course irrigation is limited, and of course, you'll see most common is going to be paper products in food service areas, and no automatic providing of food. Councilwoman McPherson had asked staff to research the car washes in the area. Currently, there's eight that operate in the city. Our code compliance had gone out, made contact with those that were available and open to us. We could not make contact with two of those, is my understanding. They're either closed due to weather, or they just simply didn't return a phone or email. But unfortunately, every single car wash in the city that we did speak to does not use any reclamation system at all. So all of those would be affected under a level three.
Does that mean they couldn't, basically their business would have to shut down?
Yeah, but for the most part, you're in winter months, but yes, they would be affected, without question. Before you and the council, and I'll ask the city clerk to go ahead and put up the proposal. So in some additional conversation with some EBD consultants, who also actually made some inquiries on behalf of the city regarding, what EPD is seeking here is that if we were to go to level three, the only way they would ever approve it, per the conversations they've had with the city, is if that we have tiered conservation rates in place. They have further clarified that what tiered conservation rates is, is that they're not looking for the city to remove those after the drought. They are looking for long-term drought and conservation efforts moving forward, and that from a regulatory standpoint, they want tiered conservation rates in place with all water authorities. So I have put forth a document and have reworked the data, so we'll put this up front, and if the council were to approve, there's two-fold things here going on. So one, you really have to consider and decide whether or not you want to go tier three. If you want to go tier three, we have to be able to propose tiered conservation rates. So what staff did is they took current residential water rates, and currently, the base connection fee, the readiness-to-serv fee, if you will, that is already in place in the city, is $5 for seniors and $12 for all others. The seniors obviously have to come in, fill out some paperwork for eligibility, so they actually have discounted. But in that, it currently includes 1,000 gallons of water. Does everybody have a copy? Everybody have a copy?
Looking for the updated one.
It should have been at your work session, station when you got here. So, and then of course, if you live outside the city, those rates are $15. Now, the rationale between inside-city rates and outside is that the taxpayers of the City of Villarica pay for the infrastructure, so therefore, they're actually paying, and should be paying, less than those outside the city, who do, you know, because there's a service delivery cost to provide services outside the city. Staff, for instance, were paid by the taxpayers. So when we looked at this, what staff is suggesting is let this stand on its own merit, go ahead and move forward the current base charge of $5 and $12 with no change, with the exception of have it as a true readiness-to-serv fee. Do not give away any water in that. Now, keep in mind that the city average user is about 3,500 gallons. So what the city has done is, it has introduced a more finite conservation tier. So you would go from 0 to 2,000 gallons, as opposed to having the first 1,000 gallons free, and then it used to go from that 1,000 gallons to, I believe, just over 4,000 gallons. So in this case, your 0 to 2,000 gallons would be the same $3.08 that you currently would have been paying for up to, I believe, something like 4,600 gallons. So we're not changing any of the rates, we're simply changing the tiers. So the conservation tier says that if you're within 2,000 gallons, your rate's not gonna change. You'll still be at the 308 per 1,000 gallons. If you're 2,000 to 10,000 gallons, you will pay a slight high of 376. 10,000 to 20,000 would be 471 per 1,000 gallons, and then over 20,000 gallons, as a residential customer, you'd pay 752. At the end of the day, at the bottom of the sheet, in the bottom right-hand corner, the question that I assume Councilman Verlin Bestwast is, what's this truly going to cost me as a user? So we looked at the average user, and you're talking $2.40 additional per month for a residential user. Keep in mind, again, we're not changing the cost of the base rate, we're not changing the actual rates itself, we're simply modifying the structure to introduce the tiered conservation level that we believe that once we submit to the state, that they may approve on its own face, and then should the city adopt to move forward with level three, go ahead and approve level three. Keep in mind that once the drought's done and finished with, these rates would not change. These would be basically your 2017 rates, and we still have a discussion on the council side, where you'll be discussing your overall enterprise funds anyway. And so, once that overall rate study is completed, and it's presented to the council, moving forward for 2018, 2019, over a five-year period, you can start to make some strategic decisions about your enterprise funds. Bottom line is, by making this change, what is the estimated, I'll use the Councilman Carter's term, what is the estimated windfall to the city's enterprise fund? You're talking $148,608. Keep in mind that the taxpayers currently move roughly about 1.5 million from the tax base to the enterprise fund. So this will basically make up about a 10% of that in year one. So it's sort of chipping at the larger issue, while also realizing that you can address your enterprise funds, while at the same time, start to appease what the state wants, which is the tiered rate, and then, once you have the larger discussion about enterprise fund, you know, this would be your sort of annual increase for 2017, if you will. So I'll, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David. I just have a couple of comments, and then I know other council members do too, but you know, I completely understand, and I agree that we need to escalate our drought status from level two to level three. I guess the only heartburn I've got a little bit with this is that we're basically putting eight businesses out of business, is I understand it.
That might not be all.
Is there, is there any mitigating circumstances? For instance, I know they said even if you go to tier three, if you're a pressure washer, you're still allowed to pressure wash, only because that's your job. It's not me out pressure washing my house. Construction sites, I think it shuts them down on being able to clean certain, they can do some things, but not other, but these people, this could be their very livelihood. Does the state allow any exception for those type of circumstances?
The answer is that there is some openness to negotiation, and talking to some of the authorities in Harrelson County, they have given me insight into their process and some of their negotiations. So there are some things that are non-negotiable, I understand, but there are others that potentially are. There's also potentially some variances that can be requested through the authority. I can't sit here and tell you that, yes, they'll be A-OK.
But we can ask.
But absolutely, we can ask, and when we do our petition to the state, we can be very forthcoming with the information on the submittal.
Thank you, David. And the second question I had was, this addresses residential water rates, it does not address commercial water rates. And as I understand it, in talking with you today, that we, you know, we are gonna aggressively try to get a water rate study, which would address not only residential, but also our commercial water rates.
Yeah, in fact, every time, every model I've run, and I've been looking at some of these models now for probably about 10 weeks, we do have a serious disconnect on rhyme or reason for our commercial rates, but it's more sensitive, because it's also attached to economic development, jobs, and some companies that absolutely relocate based on water. So that larger rate study will be a great eye-opener. It's actually where we're hemorrhaging the worst, if you will.
It's with the industrial or commercial?
Commercial.
Commercial, not industrial, sorry.
Commercial, not industrial, commercial. I will say, and I anticipate this'll probably come out in the news, and I don't want to break someone else's news story, so I'm just going to make reference to another government who apparently passed some rates about three years ago, but never implemented them, and recently implemented them, and it's causing a lot of heartache, because they saw bills that went from like $50 to like $200. Anytime you make changes like this strategically, we as a city have to be able to comment to make sure that we go a little overboard and send letters and educate the end user that these changes are forthcoming, 'cause if we do go to drought three, the enforcement is mandatory, so the education efforts ought to at least be fivefold of that effort.
How I'd like to see, maybe a picture taken of the house that uses 20,000 gallons a month. I was wondering about that. Does anybody use that much residential?
Pools.
Rissy?
Oh, okay.
Some information's public, not all, but I'll gladly take you over and show you a couple of these pools.
Other questions or comments?
Like water slides.
I personally think we're a little premature going to level three. I'm not ready to hit the people that hard yet, and it's gonna hit some businesses pretty hard.
If we can get some allowances, variances, whatever, people aren't cutting back very well. I know there's some people that are, but they aren't. Now, this'll help some, but our water resources are in trouble, and it's gonna cost us a bunch of money buying it all from Carroll County. Now, maybe we want to do that, but Carroll County doesn't have, they only have so much water, too.
Carroll County has informed the city on multiple occasions that they will, they feel confident that they can meet our continued needs. We are working together, we have worked together on our withdrawals, but the reality is, right now, about 70% of our water is being purchased. We are in drought conditions. We have throttled back, and we communicate with the authority on what we're doing and how we're doing it. The rain helps, but keep in mind, one of our reservoirs is completely doing nothing for us. The second surface water, we have siphoned what we can, and even when we did the most recent siphon, we only got about a day's worth of water. The reality is, is the primary reservoir is well below full pool. If we could get that magical 10 inches of rain, but the problem is, if that rain, 10 inches came this month, we would be in flood conditions. So you gotta be careful what you pray for, if you will. Now, that said, be mindful, I'm not saying that we're going to have a flood, but in talking to the National Weather Service, they have made it very clear to everyone that has participated in all these emergency management meetings regarding the drought, that droughts are followed by floods, and every drought has been followed. So be mindful of that, but continue to do the rain dance. I'd love to continue to have it raining like it has over the last, you know, couple of days, you know, for the foreseeable future. They are telling us, right now, that that's not in the cards, and it's not just Villarica, you know, it's for the whole northwest part of Georgia, going well into metro Atlanta, and then certainly west Alabama. I wish we had magic balls, but we don't.
Well, we don't even have the option of level three if we don't do this first. So we have to at least consider this, 'cause we can't ask for the other without the tiers. So I'd like to see us move forward on the tiers, have that in place, and then negotiate with the state. We don't say we have to go three, but let's negotiate and see if we can get some of these businesses taken care of. I can't imagine putting people out of business. I can't imagine they wouldn't give us some variance on that. I'd like to see us go to level three. That's just my opinion, but...
If, and of course, I always try to take memory, but I always have stuff in front of me. So if you look here on the tiers, the tier was, the first, the readiness-to-serv fee, the base fee, always included, you know, 1,000 gallons of water. So then, the old tier was 1,000 to 4,900 gallons. Then you went from 4,900 to 76, and then you basically just said everything over 7650. So what we did is, is we took that initial base tier of what that 1,000 gallons, you know, and just broke out. So we've just simply altered the tiers for the benefit of, you know, what I believe will be a long-term plan. I also did compare these tiers with multiple other authorities throughout the state. I'm very optimistic that the state would accept these as conservation tiers.
But this only addresses residential.
At this time, yes, sir.
Yeah. So you really got the biggest users still hanging out there at the old rate.
When do we get to address commercial?
I suspect it's going to be early next year. It's a much more complicated issue. Our tiered rates, and I wish I'd brought the schedule with me, they have broken out basically the basically the water rates based on the size of the pipe and the overall gallons. And when you calculate the rates, there's no rhyme or reason. So if I went and switched the size of the pipe I got, I could get like one and a half million gallons, you know, at X rate. So they're very heavily discounted. So on the commercial side, if we implemented the tier rates right now on the commercial side, they would be the hardest hit. And I, you know, there's a difference between two dollars and forty cents versus hundreds of thousands of dollars on a commercial side if we simply implement. I think that we need to look at our volumes and forget what the pipe size is, and sort of forget that. That the reality is, is that we are selling water, and infrastructure is why you want to have readiness to serve fees, and you also want to look at your tap fees, so that you want to look at the infrastructure. I think by looking at them, it looks like the thought process was, we'll just recoup at some point all of that cost of that infrastructure by these varied rates based on the pipes, and that's just not happening. So I would say that, you know, we are engaged, but we also recognize the cost for the rate study is in the 2017 budget. So that's why I estimate Q1. And it's not just water rates. It's water rates, it's sewer rates, it's sanitation, it's your tap fees, it's your readiness fees. There's a lot more involved in making sure that we actively do this while not disenfranchising our existing users and scaring away future economic development to the city.
Just so the public knows, I asked this question in the work session. We're buying about a million gallons of water a day from Carroll County?
A little more right now, yes, sir.
And that cost is?
On a monthly basis, if we go to a hundred percent, you're talking fifty to sixty thousand dollars per month, run rate at our current spend. It's going to get costly. We did that for the first eight months of this year because we were, we took the plant out of operation. You know, if we had the foresight to understand we were in a drought, you know, but you just can't do that, but it was fortuitous. But that's why roughly we had run that tab of about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars of buying a hundred percent water, sir.
I like, I like this tiered rate because I think it goes a step above just telling people, cut your, you know, don't water your lawn. Now, if you water your lawn and you fill your pool up and your spa up, you're going to pay a little bit more than you would normally. So, you know, if there's an incentive, it's always if you hit someone in the pocketbook, you hit them, you know, they have an incentive to use less water, so I like that.
It's not like hammering people.
It's not hammering people. Yeah, the average person, you know, two dollars and forty cents. Look, a tax is a tax. But, you know, what we're doing here is trying to urge people to conserve water, and I agree with the public comments John made, that, you know, it's easy now to look outside and it's raining and forget about the drought, but drought's still here, and if you don't believe that, go look at Lake Fashion, and it'll remind you of that. But, you know, what I hear council saying and trying to move this along, we're okay with escalating it to level three drought, so long as we can get the, an exception or exemption for the car washes.
That's where I am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I always say, always be careful what you say, because you never know who's listening. Well, our Public Works Director is listening and watching, and so he's texting me. So he spent, you know, over two decades at EPD. He says that he's very confident that we can seek a professional exemption for car wash because the water goes into our sanitary sewer, or if they recycle. So because they are connected to our sewer system, as long as they're connected, that he feels confident that we should be able to request and obtain a professional exemption for those car washes because we're reclaiming their water through the sewer system.
Thank you, Pete.
Let me make sure I'm understanding. So we buy water from Carroll County at a hundred thousand dollars? I believe that's what you said.
Fifty to sixty thousand dollars per month if we go a hundred percent, sir.
Okay, let's say fifty thousand dollars that we pay them. How much do we actually receive from the general public for that fit, for that amount of water that we buy from them?
I don't have those numbers obviously available right now.
Roughly, I mean?
I couldn't tell you roughly, you know, I mean, our run rate right now, because I have it in your other presentation from last week. So if you look at last week's data, I believe it shows the run rate, which I think is something like a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars per month, is what we're pulling in.
So the biggest difference is, the amount of water that we buy cuts into our total profit that we're making off of the seven of the water.
Well, profit is a funny word.
We're in the hole.
Profit's a funny word.
We're in the hole when we buy it.
So right now, today, yeah, all right, so the numbers I had in my head were resonating. So right now, roughly, and I'm going to round this up, a quarter million dollars per month is what is being billed for water service. And so the public knows what the breakdown is. That's roughly about eight thousand dollars from seniors, a hundred and sixteen thousand from residential, twenty-seven hundred from multi-residential, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred for residential, and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety from industrial. So roughly about a quarter million of billable. Now, the water is a raw product, so obviously where our staff, where our cost comes in is actually includes everything that goes with the production of our existing water, plus the actual service delivery system, the repair of the system, you know, plus, 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 the buildings, the vehicles, the capital. So, and I know that the question's been asked before, suppose we just got out of the business of producing water, just bought it a hundred percent? Yes, that could always be an option, but you still have all of the service delivery, so you still can't get rid of distribution collections, the building system, the capital, the vehicles, the tanks, you know, all you're really doing is no longer processing and running, you know, say, three staff members at a water plant.
And as I recall, we passed along a water rate increase this year.
Yeah, you're, did a five percent base water increase to water only, yes, sir, that went into effect January one. So, and if this council approves it, the earliest, because we always bill in the rears, if you will, so they've already, so by the time this is in effect, it would be January one next year.
Other questions and comments? So David, you need direction as to where you, moving forward, how we need to address this, correct?
One, you would have to authorize the council to implement the tiered rates, and then, second, you would have to authorize staff to submit and seek level three from state EPD. And they would have five days to respond. And that doesn't mean that they would approve it in five days. There may have to be some negotiation or changes. In talking to the other authorities, I personally think it would be surprising if it was approved in five days. I think there'll be some additional information that we'll have to provide, but...
David, does this need public comment, or?
No, there's not any public comment that's needed. If you were going to do either one of those two actions, either to adopt the new water rates, or to sanction the city manager to apply for drought level, it would take a motion on either of those.
I would entertain such a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt the new tiered rates?
That would be the rates, as shown as the proposed residential water rates on the document dated twelve, six, twenty sixteen.
Thank you, I appreciate that. As so stated.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Three, one. Thank you, David.
Then you either can or cannot, I mean, you either, you have to choose whether or not you're going to do anything on the request to move to drought level three tonight.
Is that a vote, or just a consensus for him to?
No, it would need to be a vote to direct him, I mean, either to do it, or for nobody to make a motion, and you could reconsider it at any time.
My only concern is, we want certain concessions, and we don't know if we can get those concessions. So it's not a just go do it, it's a go negotiate, right? So we can...
You can, you can put your motion any form you want to, if that's, if that's what your direction to him is, is to go negotiate and find out what we can do, that would be an appropriate motion, too.
Well, then I would make a motion that we instruct staff to negotiate with the state to allow us to move to level three with some exceptions for the businesses that would be out of business if we didn't get the exceptions they need.
David, is that clear?
Is that clear enough?
So I'm understanding that staff would be authorized to make submittal for a level three declaration in the city of Villarica, and that we would apply for a variance for our affected businesses at this point. We certainly understand those to be the car washes. If there are others, we would apply for a variance, and so that's what I understand the motion to be.
Yes, and let me just, never mind, that's good.
I second most.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I'm going to withhold my support until I hear who's going to be exempt and who isn't.
So we have a tie. Well, well, well.
You get your first chance.
Stick your neck out there.
I don't have any election results yet, sir, so...
Okay. I will, I will break the tie and instruct the city managers to proceed with a level three designation and to include car washes. Well, I'll just...
Everything affected.
I'm approving Leslie's motion. How about that?
Approving David's motion.
Yeah, and one point that I think we probably need to talk about and be clear on, so that there's no misunderstanding here amongst the council, and that is whether or not your motion is conditioned on, we don't go to level three if we don't get an exemption, because as it was stated, that we would try to get the exemption, so...
I would have that as a condition.
Yeah, I think that's the...
Because that is a whole different thing to then vote on. We, if we couldn't get those conditions for those businesses, then we bring it back and say, okay, now what are we going to do? Are we still going to do that, or do we back off? And just another thing, too, is sometimes they only give us this for, what, sixty days, ninety days? This, it doesn't necessarily go on forever.
It doesn't. Like I said, you know, we're entering our winter months when folks don't really wash their cars, but again, we're going to make submittal to the state for level three, and we're going to apply for a variance. We should get an indication from them, but what our Public Works Director is saying is, as long as those locations are connected to our sanitary sewer, or they reclaim water on site, they will have a professional exemption automatically. So all we're going to do tomorrow is check our sewer records, our utility records, and if all of those locations have sewer, then automatically they have a professional exemption in the current level three guidelines and would not need a variance. I don't know of any others that would require a variance right now. So for the staff perspective, you know, I understand the authorization to go ahead and apply for level three. I certainly will be mindful and will double-check, and if they are not on sewer, I can't imagine why they're not, knowing the locations, but if they're not, at that point, we'd have to apply for a variance, and I don't know if we apply or they apply. I'm going to have to seek some guidance on that. But I'm very mindful of what the council is instructing me to do, and what I'm hearing is if that, if we have businesses that are going to be affected, basically bring it back to council and say, before we can implement, y'all have to understand that they're going to be affected. At this point, I only am aware of car washes, so that's the most that I know about at this time. Correct?
Councilman, does that satisfy your, do you want to...
I'm good.
...amend your motion, or is it necessary, or?
I don't think it's necessary, and I think with that clarification, we're all on the same page here, is it? Y'all just want to know before any businesses get shut down?
Okay, so the motion carries three, two. Tab, I don't guess we have a tab C. Is this an Athens High School question here? We don't have a tab.
Yes, sir.
I know C generally comes after B, but...
It was taken down in the work session.
Got you, got you. So tab D, community development, David?
This is a request to the council to refer this conditional use permit application back to planning and zoning on advice of our city attorney.
We have reviewed this, and it's my opinion that we need to review the application again in relation to our utility permit ordinance, and I don't think that's been done yet, so it would be appropriate to send it back to the staff and to the Planning and Zoning Commission to review it in conjunction with that ordinance.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Motion, a second, boy, y'all quick. Discussion?
Ready to go.
All in favor? Opposed?
Looks like they're having a December meeting.
We had some concerns, so I'm glad for it to go back and get looked at again.
Tab E.
This is the hotel motel tax. Currently, you had a presentation made by Chris Pike last week. At this point, the council has to make a determination on whether or not it wants staff to start to move forward with the city attorney on the process of a hotel motel tax. Keep in mind that tonight is not a vote to adopt or approve a tax. If you are in favor moving forward, what you're authorizing staff to do is to start the mandatory process. I shared that with the council via email, which means that we have to start the process of having a public notification drafted and then published in the legal organ. It means that we have to get a proposed resolution drafted up by the city attorney for passage by the city council. It means that we would have to have the local legislation from the office council drafted so that you could move forward. So this is not a vote to move from the five percent to eight percent, but rather to give council, the staff, direction on whether or not to move forward with the process, so that during the legislative session in 2017, you have an opportunity, along with the city of Carrollton, to have local legislation discussed and considered that would move the city's current hotel motel tax to eight percent.
I got a question. You keep saying from five to eight, do we not have the option of stopping somewhere in the middle?
You go five, six, seven, eight. Yes, absolutely, I don't want to jump over. All the staff recommendation, based on the different criteria, different types, was to go to the eight percent.
Just for clarification, too, for those of them that don't understand what, this is the tax that you pay if you, if you go out of town, if you go to Gatlinburg, and you rent a motel, if you look at all the taxes that are added, you know, the room may be fifty dollars, but by the time you pay for that, it's sixty or seventy dollars. So that's all those additional taxes that are paid. I know one council lady has a concern about that, but that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about taxes on people that necessarily live here, although we, that could happen. These are guests primarily that come in and they use our motels, and they would pay that additional three cents. So that's what we're talking about, just for clarification. And I know councilmen...
I'll add just a couple of things. Just, just a year ago, there was a... Just, just a year ago, there was an additional $5 added per day on the hotel motel industry, bed and breakfast industry, and they got blindsided by the state because it got added in just before midnight, and so they didn't even have a chance to testify, defend themselves or anything else. It's not only us, you know, okay, maybe we're not staying here, if we travel elsewhere and everybody goes to eight percent, if, if that's the philosophy of all the other cities, that means when we travel to those other areas, if that's their philosophy, we will also pay more as citizens. I'd also like to remind us that there are a number of nonprofits that put people up in motels, homeless families, things like that. They will also pay that, and just that $5 a day that they added, you multiply that times seven a week, times four weeks, that's another, what is that, $140 additional a month that it's costing for them to house that family. So I just want to realize, it has a human impact on top of the motels themselves. I just, because we have to advertise, they will have an opportunity to get a say, and that's a good thing, because they should know, this is going to affect their industry, they should know about it and they should have an opportunity to say, yeah, we think that's a great idea or we think it isn't. I think instead of raising taxes, if you get more, if you attract more people, you get more money. So if you attract more people to your area and rooms are fuller, you get that tax even on a lower rate. I just hate to see us constantly raise taxes across the board. We currently have a five percent. If we went to the eight percent, I'm glad to hear there's something in between, that is the maximum allowed by the state. We would be maxing out, and that's why we have to, isn't that why we have to get it approved through the state?
Anytime that you change any aspect of your hotel motel tax, you have to go before the state under certain ordinances and have local legislation. You already have certain local authority, but this particular law will require you to have local legislation to approve it.
And, I mean, the, the, our, our convention and tourism bureau, they have legitimate reasons of things they want to do with this additional money, but I will remind you that government never has enough money, and they can always think of more things to do with additional money, and I think we ought to do it with the money we're getting. Thanks, thanks for the time.
Coach?
If a room costs $100, as some of us say, our constituents, a room costs $100, you've got a five percent tax on it, which is $5. Now you're asking for $8 for that $100 room. 60% of that goes to the city, 40% goes to the tourism.
Not true if you go to eight percent.
That's, that's not necessarily so if you go up to eight percent.
Only five percent.
Five percent is that.
Right.
Eight percent is going to be $8. Still 60% goes to the city, 40% goes to tourism, but in essence, it's the $3 extra that we're talking about.
That's not true, because that 3% of other is not, 60% doesn't come to us. It changes, it all goes over tourism. That extra $3 goes tourism.
Well, there's Mr. Pike. Usually I'm used to you busting through the doors, I didn't realize you're already here. I would have imagined you were up here long ago.
That presentation he gave...
Where's the PowerPoint presentation, do we have that?
It showed that we didn't get that $3.
It, Councilman Vess is correct, but the, the, the money is earmarked for project development, you can't use it for general fund money. So only the 3%, or in this case, what we have now, the 60-40 split can be used, but the city still keeps the tourism product development, but they can only use it for bricks and mortar stuff, they can't, that develops tourism. So they still, the split is correct, but what the city has to allocate that extra, what was it, 3.5%, 1.5% is for the development of projects to increase tourism.
Other questions? I asked this question in the work session, and I just want to ask it again. Could a portion of, any portion of that money be used for things such as concerts at the mill?
Absolutely. In fact, we, we have a earmarked amount in the budget, specific, and, and the physical funding is actually coming from the unrestricted portion of hotel motel tax. For instance, the, in the proposed budget, for instance, is the, I forget what I called it, community enhancement grant or something like that, I forget what, what I called it. For instance, that, that money was being earmarked from unrestricted. The, the actual events money in Parks and Rec for the mill and the entertainment was, was from the unrestricted. Ultimately, this year is sort of different because now that we have the local contract with the DDA and the funding mechanism worked out, that, that the plan was to be able to use the unrestricted money to fund the, the, the local entertainment and, and, and events that were going on in the city.
Is the unrestricted within that 60% that the city?
Under the current or the proposed?
Under the current.
It's all, it's all budgeted under the current right now, so, so we'll have to tweak it if you elect to go to the mill.
And the reason I ask that question is because I am committed to improving the entertainment value at the hole in the ground, is that what you call it? But, you know, I think that, I don't, those of you that know me know that I'm very, I don't like to lose, and I would like to see us bring a different level of entertainment to, to the mill. And, and I don't want us to get away from that being a community gathering place, that's what it was designed to be. I helped birth that baby, and so I want that to continue, but, you know, I would like to see us bring in some, some bigger acts, I won't call them better, because we've had good acts, but I would like to see us bring in some, some bigger acts to, to the mill, if that's possible.
I agree.
I think if you remember, the hole in the ground comment was just after they tore the whole place down and there wasn't nothing there but a hole in the ground.
Okay, further comments? Let's move this train down the rail here. We will need a motion and second to direct the city manager to do...
Do what?
Something.
You have to basically say that, you know, for the most part, y'all are in favor of moving forward, so that'll go ahead and allow us to start working on it. If, if you're not in favor, then, then we're not going to start advertising and, and, you know, get resolutions and things like that drafted up, sir.
So this is a motion to direct staff to move forward with the process and not a binding vote at this point?
You know, nothing's binding until you get it all the way through the legislature, so, so you have a long way to go, but yes, sir.
But even from this council, it's not binding at this point.
That's correct, nothing's binding at this point, it's just basically saying, you know, go ahead and start advertising, communicating, getting the public informed about it, that...
You'd have to draft up an ordinance...
Exactly.
To, to bring back to you to vote on it, I mean, really what you're doing is directing the staff to, to move, to bring back to you the movement from five percent to eight percent.
Is it going to be a direction to move to eight percent, or, I mean, that's, that's an option, we can stop at six or seven.
You, you could do that, Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong about this, but on each different level, there are different directions as to how you spend the money. If you pick 6%, the money can be used in a certain way, 7% a certain way, then 8% is a certain way, so it's, it's different at every different level.
Isn't that all spelled out in that big, thick hotel motel information we got, I don't know, a year or two ago? Had that in a file somewhere?
It, it is, but hopefully, Chris has done such a magnificent job of boiling it down in the PowerPoint presentation that is posted on the web.
For full disclosure, I just...
You only did eight percent.
...used DCA's presentation.
Yeah, I know.
They, they, you know, I don't want them to look at the minutes and be like, hey, that's mine.
Hey, look at that! Yeah, I, I think...
He plagiarized his title.
No, 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 it's called R and D, R and D. Rip off and duplicate.
Rip off and duplicate, it's very legal to do.
So you're asking for a motion to do this from eight, from five to eight percent, is that what you're saying?
I believe the motion would be to direct staff to move forward with the process of...
I'll make the motion.
Do, do we need to read the motion, David, just to make sure?
We don't have a written one here, but just to restate what Councilman Marchman said, she moved to direct the staff to take the steps necessary to implement the change in the hotel motel tax in Villarica from five percent to eight percent. That's what I heard her say.
Yes, that's what I said.
Do I have a second?
I guess not.
Hearing no section, a second, the motion fails. Okay. Tab E, economic development. Where actually? Was E?
Tab F.
That's my F, I mean, that's, it's okay. F1.
It got moved around when we took stuff out.
Got you. Tab F, tab F1.
F1, F2, 5...
That is the Harthouse.
I think that's my report here, and what I wanted to do is just let you know where we are on the negotiations in order to resolve the issue with the Harthouse involved. There's really two agreements that are under consideration. One is between the city of Villarica and the Villarica First Baptist Church. If you will recall, there was a presentation here at the council meeting last month, I believe, that outlined what the cost was going to be for installing sewer lines, and there was some concern about the expense of that, it was an unexpected expense. The city manager, the mayor and I met again with the trustees of the First Baptist Church to see if we could find some solution to move forward, and it was a very good meeting. I'm, I'm very optimistic that we will be able to enter into an agreement with the trustees of the church that will be satisfactory to both the city and the church. Primarily, it's going to involve the city providing some type of maintenance for the existing lift station at the church up until such time somewhere in the future as a new sewer line does get built. The city is not committing to building a sewer line, but we are, we will be committing to providing maintenance so that we do accept some of the costs that has been spent for the benefit of the public to save the Harthouse. I expect to have a draft of an agreement, I need to share it with the trustees of the church first and with the council first, and then probably bring it back public at the next meeting. After that agreement is finalized, so that the city does actually own the Harthouse and the property which it's sitting on, there'll be a necessity to have a second agreement entered into between the city and the Villarica Historical Society, because the intent, I believe, is for the Historical Society to actually manage and run the house for some period of time, so that's the second phase of negotiations of contract. Really, that hasn't taken place yet, but that's on tap as soon as we get the property tied down. Again, everything seems to be moving forward, I don't think there's any stalemate, we just need to get everything on paper so that the council and the trustees of the church are satisfied that a fair agreement has been reached.
So is it reasonable to expect that that would be on the, the January agenda?
I have every reason to expect that it would be.
Questions? Okay. Tab number two, which is an intergovernmental agreement, and that would be, David, are you handling that one?
This is a intergovernmental agreement between the city of Villarica and Carroll County to induce post four of the Georgia State Patrol to maintain its presence in the vicinity of the city of Villarica at its, as it locates to a new post four facility. The proposed intergovernmental agreement is in your packet for consideration and will simultaneously also be moving forward with the county government until directed otherwise.
I think, I think the public needs a little bit more of an explanation of what we're talking about here, David, if, if you want to answer that, or I'll answer it.
Let's go ahead and pull up the agreement itself. So the current post quarters are only in counties that actually make quarters available. The current quarters are on Bankhead Highway, just past 61, and to, to say that their deplorable conditions are an understatement. The buildings in the past has had mold issues, they have water, sewer, plumbing issues, roof issues. In fact, it's to the point that even the troopers no longer really even bother staying overnight. The, so the county has stepped up and said that it's important enough to keep the post here in Villarica and in Carroll County as opposed to having it moved to either the county that it serves, the other county being Douglas County, and so that it can provide dual service in the area and rapid response. The proposed location is a renovated SunTrust bank building. It has barracks, sleeping quarters, administrative offices, it would have the first drive-up window in the state that would allow you to go out and pay your fine or get an exit report. It also has training space that would be conducive, and in fact, they have given an open invitation, the city of Villarica, to do coordinated training there. And in order to maintain that barrack, the county stepped up, bought the building and then has used county labor and inmate labor to renovate it, but there's a gap in order, that needs to be closed in order to finish it, so they've turned to the city of Villarica and other governments in order to close that gap. So in this specific agreement, it is asking that the city stand tall with the county and come up with the sum of $191,500 for improvements to the property, specifically furnishing office barracks, security fence, security system and exterior lighting. The chairman for Carroll County, Marty Smith, Carroll County, has also approached other governments and is, and talks with them about future commitments and future upgrades as well for unrestricted SPOSS funds. So what you have before you is an agreement. Also, it states in here that should the city at any time elect to annex the property into the city of Villarica, that it shall be permitted. It's actually just right outside the city limits at this time. This facility is located in the area of State Route 61 in Vanort Road, just south of the Vplex.
Thank you, David. Question, is there any possibility that we could include in the agreement that they would give Villarica the old piece of property for our $191,500?
That actually was discussed with the chairman. In our discussions, that property by state law, once this agreement goes through, the property automatically reverts back to the county. The, when, when the chairman met with myself and the mayor, he had indicated that that's actually designated for the future fires, new fire station in Villarica.
Which would be, would replace Station 9?
Correct, yes.
What's up wrong with Station 9?
It's very small, that, that's the, that's the busiest fire station in Carroll County, if you didn't know, they, they get more calls, they answer more calls than any other station in Carroll County.
What is the, the option to be able to annex them? What is the advantage to Villarica of that?
If I was an executive session, I would answer that, but, but I'll refer your question privately to Danny Carter on our development authority.
One, one point is that just historically, which is important to a lot of people, is the Villarica State Patrol post has been inside the city limits of Villarica for, I think as long as probably anybody can remember, and to some people, it's important. The... uh, the, the, they, we get a little bit better patrolling on the interstates when, because they're close to us. They do write a number of citations, uh, I don't know if, Chief, do, do State Patrol citations come to municipal court, do any? So, so it's, it's considered to be an advantage to have a State Patrol Post in your city, uh, as opposed to not.
Yeah, and that's why we've, we're trying to hold on to them and not let another county have them, and basically, the county is asking us to step up, it's in Villa Rica to step up and to help with the cost, because we get an advantage from it too, and our officers will be allowed to use that for training facilities as well.
I think, I think it's a great idea to keep it in Villa Rica, if at all possible.
The only problem is not going to be in Villa Rica.
Well, only if we annex it.
Well, it's, it's in Villa Rica now, it's just not in city limits right now.
It feels in Villa Rica now, and that's certainly not in the city limits, I understand what you're saying.
I suspect it may very well soon be, um, if, if the council, um, early next year takes action.
And talking with, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, the issues have come up about surrounding properties and different things of that nature, uh, the biggest concern, and, and, see, my understanding was he wanted to do sewer, and my statement was, you know, the city doesn't do sewer outside the city. Well, then I was corrected, they don't want to do sewer right now. They have a, a, uh, a septic system that's, uh, real good, so they, they're choosing not to worry about that right now, later on, they might, and with sewer line being within a hundred yards of, of that establishment, um, they was very receptive to that idea of, and, and, uh, as well as I am. It, it goes all the way up, and, and I think what, what we all understood, or didn't understand, I didn't understand it for a while, until I found out that neutral sites consider, or consist of schools and, in this case, the State Patrol Office. Uh, it can be owned by the county or by the state, and they are called neutral sites for various reasons. Uh, and I use the example of Ithaca Elementary School on the other side of the road, that joined in the two pieces of property that the gentleman wanted to put the bowling alley on, and, and actually where the, uh, the rodeo is, is on city property, uh, but it's based on the ability of going through Ithaca Elementary School to get there being contiguous to city property. So, you know, that's, uh, to me, that won't be an issue as far as any more land that comes in outside, quote unquote, the city. Uh, you, we can call it what we want to, but, you know, before it's so with, uh, those, those, uh, three or four stores will be in the city, and, and the State Patrol station will be, become that neutral site.
Ladies and gentlemen, what is your desire?
I got one more question, if-
Okay.
Could we add to it, if we annex them into the city, they'll join on to the sewer? I mean, we would like them to be part of the city.
I think that's really an issue for another time.
Another time, another place, huh?
Anyway, I think it's a good idea to have them in the city, so I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement. Okay, have a, have a motion and a second to approve this memorandum of understanding between the City of Villa Rica and-
I'll second it with a question after we get through.
Discussion? If not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
David, where we getting the money? Now that we voted on it, where we getting the money?
Um, you have, um, uh-
We get the money.
You have adequate resources in your fund balance, sir.
Next item is city charter.
Uh, I thought we were going to take this off the agenda, but just a quick report is that we have committed to the citizens of Villa Rica that we would have a full council before we started discussing the new proposed city charter. Hopefully, that will happen sometime tonight, uh, that we will know, you know, who is going to be on the full council. Uh, I would suspect soon after we do have a full council, we will need to establish a schedule for discussion of any changes to the charter, so that we can have it prepared and take the next step, if, if that's the desire of the council.
Thank you, David. So no action taken. Uh, next item is senior exemptions.
Yeah, on the senior exemptions, uh, question was raised several months ago, uh, concerning the senior tax exemption in the City of Villa Rica, and, uh, the city manager, uh, David looked into it and, uh, discovered some information which, uh, came to the city for the, really the first time since the senior tax exemption was enacted by the council in two thousand and four. I was asked to do some investigation as to the status of the senior tax exemption, I've now completed that, uh, review and investigation, I'm just here to report to you today the status of it. The, uh, tax exemption, uh, that was in place was being inconsistently applied here in the city, I think that's been public knowledge, it was in the newspaper, that, uh, the exemption which initially was intended to provide a, an exemption to low-income senior citizens in the City of Villa Rica, uh, there was a requirement that, in order to be eligible for it, you had to be over sixty-five, and you had to have taxable income under ten thousand dollars, not including, uh, social security and retirement benefits. Uh, for some period of time, that was apparently imposed in both Carroll and Douglas County, and it's important to realize that the city itself does not monitor the income, we leave that up to the respective, uh, tax commissioners and tax assessors in each county to monitor that for us, so that you don't, if you are a senior applying for a tax exemption, you don't come to the city saying, here's my income information, you go to the county tax assessors and show that. At some point in time, the process in the two counties diverged through no fault of theirs, uh, it just changed, and the city does not monitor, and did not monitor it year after year after year, to determine how the tax assessors were, uh, implement, implementing and applying that senior exemption, so that the, uh, the result was that it was being applied differently in Douglas County than it was in Carroll County, which is obviously an inherent unfairness to the imposition of the tax. Uh, that, that was, you know, obvious very quickly, and, you know, my statement to everybody is that, you know, that has to be fixed, it can't go on like that. Also, and this is probably most importantly, well, secondly, there, there's some questions that, you know, this council needs to consider as to whether or not the original intent of the senior exemption is being met. The discussion at the time in two thousand and four, I know several of you were actually a part of, of the discussions at that time, were that the exemptions were intended to benefit the, um, uh, low-income people who were barely scraping by, uh, that it was intended to help, um, you know, really low-income people who, who were having a hard time paying their taxes. Well, the net result is gone beyond that. Uh, at the time this was passed, uh, the information that was presented was that it was costing the city roughly thirty thousand dollars per year to implement it. Uh, I think the information that we now have is that it's, it is costing the city roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately, and under this exemption, as it now stands right now, you can have people who are significantly beyond the concept of low-income people, who are getting the full benefit of this senior tax exemption, and because of how it's structured right now, you know, the, the more expensive your property, the higher, you know, you own, the more, more benefit you're getting. If you live in a million-dollar house, you're getting much more of an exemption than if you live in a twenty thousand dollar house. So I think that's a policy decision that the council is going to have to consider when you decide whether or not you are going to replace the senior exemption that currently exists, which leads me to my third point. The senior exemption that it currently exists no longer exists, it is void, and it, it, it cannot be applied, it is unconstitutional the way it currently is. So, uh, if the council chooses to reenact a new senior tax exemption, you're going to need to decide, first of all, what type of exemption you want to give, if any, uh, what the, the qualifications are going to be. Uh, you, you will need to pass a, an ordinance asking for that to be put into place, that will then have to be submitted to the state legislature to, uh, vote, to allow us to have a referendum, uh, for the people to actually vote on whether or not to implement that senior exemption. And that's the reason why the current one is, is unconstitutional right now, is because we did not have a referendum to, um, to approve that, and any type of tax exemption of that nature is going to have to be approved by the voters. So that's where we stand right now, is of, is of, right now, I mean, it's already been applied for the twenty sixteen tax year, but unless this council chooses to move forward with some type of new exemption for senior citizens in some shape, form, or fa- form, shape, some shape, form, or fashion, you won't have it in twenty seventeen.
If it's illegal, why is it being used still in two thousand and sixteen?
Because the tax bills already went out, a- and it was, I, I, I don't say that it was illegal, it was unconstitutional. That happens, a- and, let me explain the difference, because I, I know you're going to think I'm using a bunch of lawyer words here, but statutes get passed all the time by legislative bodies, that until they get challenged, they, they are applied, and it's only when someone challenges it, and it's determined that the statute is in violation of the constitution, that it can no longer be applied. People throw out the term illegal all, all the time, uh, it, it's not my belief that it was illegally applied, but it was constitutionally applied, and because somebody raised that issue, and we've now been forced to look at it, and I, as your lawyer, have been forced to look at it, and I'm telling you, it's void.
It's void, so they are not going to collect that, they're not going to allow that exemption?
Beginning in twenty seventeen.
Okay, so it's no longer there?
No.
We have to come up with something new.
You're going to have to come up with something new if you choose to, and if you choose to come up with something new, my recommendation is that you get some, uh, indication of, of, you know, what an appropriate level would be, and then we pass an ordinance sending it to the legislature, asking them to allow us to have a referendum. I, I will tell you that, the, by far, the largest types of senior exemptions that you will see, if you go and look at other cities, counties, that have these type of exemptions in place, what they will do is set an exemption that we're, we're granting senior citizens an additional exemption, instead of, just, I'm using examples here, instead of four thousand dollars, we'll let you have an eight thousand dollar homestead exemption for people over sixty-five, that's, that's pretty standard in many local governments. Uh, ours was one of the, uh, very few that I've seen that completely exempted seniors from any type of taxes.
But that part wasn't the unconstitutional, the unconstitutional part was it has to be done through a referendum.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, you, you can continue, if you choose to, to have a referendum to completely exempt seniors from, from paying any type of-
It wasn't just seniors, it was, I know, I, I pushed that through in my first term, it was aimed at low-income seniors, and it phased in, so, over a period of years.
Okay, so we got to do something about it, but not right now.
We didn't know it was going to get changed along the way.
Right. No, it's, uh, the, the concept was good, it, it worked well for a while, but it, it does not work any longer.
Discussion.
So that would be my report on that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Discussion?
I already asked mine, I'm good.
Danny, this was your child to start with, you want to weigh in on?
I think, well, since it's not going to be valid, we'll do something next year. I don't know, there's anything right now to do.
If you're going to do something next year, it needs to be early next year, so that we can get the legislature to approve having a referendum. I mean, we, we probably would need to do something before-
I guess we would need-
End of January.
Our city attorney's recommendation on what's the best thing to do, so we won't step beyond the law on the new-
Well, I, I get together with, uh, David, and we'll-
Okay.
-come up with some proposals.
All right.
Okay. Further discussion? Moving along. A resolution to fund capital projects on the Douglas County portion of the city SPOLOST.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is a, uh, resolution to, uh, uh, fund capital, uh, projects on the Douglas County portion of the city, from the city's general fund to be repaid from proceeds that will be, um, received from the twenty sixteen Douglas County, uh, uh, special purpose local option sales tax. In simple English, what this means is that the voters in November in Douglas County, Ward Four, um, well, actually, all Douglas County, um, voters, unanimously, um, not unanimously, but overwhelmingly approved, not even overwhelmingly, they marginally approved a SPOLOST, that thing barely happened, and, uh, so, but, but now that it's passed, um, uh, there is, um, a local portion of that that comes to Villa Rica that can only be used on the, uh, Douglas County, uh, side of the city, and that's, uh, over the next six years, roughly about, uh, six plus million. Now, the voters, uh, voted in November, um, the actual additional one cent will not start to be, uh, collected until April first, because the, uh, department revenue has to, um, get the mechanism in place, um, uh, because, um, uh, there isn't currently, uh, SPOLOST, and then, um, in the latter part of twenty seventeen, money will start to come in. So in order to, uh, be good stewards to the voters who approved, um, that, um, SPOLOST, um, staff is, um, asking the council to approve a resolution that would say, we're going to tap our, uh, reserves, um, and fund some of those projects in year one, and then repay that fund as those proceeds come in. Um, the council has full authority as to what those funds are and what those projects are, and those are in the twenty seventeen proposed, uh, budget. So this is not a spending spree, this is, uh, simply to, um, uh, utilize, um, a, a stopgap, so that you can start getting some of those projects going early in the year, and then as the money starts coming in, uh, repay it.
Based on, based on the estimates of the, what, what is, that's all they can do, is project what they think the SPOLOST will bring in, we're only fronting these projects in one year, what's the amount of time that it will take, based on those projections, to pay back that money into our, uh, reserves?
Um, we project that, um, you will have, uh, repaid yourself in twenty eighteen.
Okay. Want to make sure we weren't keeping it out of there too long, and, and we have to pay it back because it says we are paying, but we have to-
Yeah, unless you all, unless you all come back and decide to change it up, but, but the goal here is not to spend and then do a Houdini. Um, it is, there, there are needs in that area of the city, and, and, from, from the perspective, I, I, I get it, um, I always hear about the haves, have-nots. Carroll County has consistently had a SPOLOST, okay? The last SPOLOST in Douglas County was for their big judicial building, so whereas all of these projects have been going on in Carroll County, nothing's been able to go in the Douglas County side, and then before that project, the last SPOLOST where the city actually got money from Douglas County, the population was min school over there, so we actually only got as much as basically what the City of Ostel's getting this time around, which, which was peanuts, um, and when I say peanuts, to me, that's about fifty to a hundred thousand, give or take, i- it wasn't a lot of money. Now, fast forward, um, the Douglas County side, um, with this SPOLOST will have about six point three to six point eight million, give or take, um, so we have conservatively prorated what, um, uh, I, I think it was something like a three-quarter million, um, give or take, that would be, um, out of the reserve for stopgap, uh, in order to get some of those projects going, starting in January and February, to basically reward them for having, um, approved the SPOLOST, because that's, um, I think the last estimate was something like forty-five percent of, of, of the revenue that came into the Douglas County SPOLOST was paid for by folks outside the county, so, so that's free money.
And the other plus, at least I really appreciate that this was done, is that Douglas County citizens were involved in deciding where those needs were, needs, and how they wanted to apportion that money to those things. So that's nice. It wasn't like us sitting up here and deciding what all needed to get done. I like the fact that we involve the citizens in that over there.
And to your comments, if somebody wanted to find out what those projects were, is that on our website somewhere, David?
Yeah, if you go to villarica.org, in the top right-hand corner, just click on the sploß tab, and all of the facts, figures, and projects are listed, sir.
Thank you.
If we were going to do something like this, it would make sense to establish a bucket of money that's equivalent to the amount of sploß funds we're going to get next year, and use that, only that bucket of money, as it's getting repaid by the sploß funds. And if it's not repaid at the end of the year, we would have to wait until it gets repaid, until that fund is fully repaid, before we go forward another year.
Correct, sir. And that's exactly what your budget has. It actually has it broken out specific for Douglas County only, Carroll County only, and it also has the estimated revenue and projection over the period of the sploß, and then list all those sploß projects out, and list that specific estimated amount that we anticipate coming in, in 2016, 2017, as well as the amount that we anticipate with a transfer from fund balance. So, and then it actually shows that broken out.
It would not all be withdrawn at one time, it would be withdrawn as the projects develop.
Yeah, the council, again, the council has to give authorization to spend. It's not, this resolution only authorizes the mechanism to be able to loan yourself money. Doesn't authorize the projects. That, the budgetary control of that is always maintained with the council.
So it's $1.3 million for 2017, but we really don't need to come up with $1.3 million?
Yeah, for some reason, again, Councilman, the figure in my head was something like three-quarters of a million, give or take, because we knew that a portion of that first year's proceeds was going to start coming in, in the latter part of the year, to make up the gap with the difference. Now, whether or not the council says, yeah, you know, we want to throttle back some of those projects, again, that's up to the council as you work through the budget before you adopt it.
Well, the way it looked, though, was we were going to give a, whatever was under 2017, we would come up with that money and make it happen totally complete, rather, and now I hear what you're saying, it makes a whole lot more sense.
It's a line of equity, actually. We're giving ourselves equity.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution to fund these projects from the city general fund to be repaid with the proceeds from the 2016 Douglas County Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax.
Second. That's a mouthful. We have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, I'm going to read this exactly the way it says it, and just smile like I "Year-end compensation adjustment for regular, full-time and part-time city employees."
Right there, it's like, what's he about?
I.e.
It's Yucca, Yucca.
Christmas bonus.
Yucca.
Which we can't say.
Yucca. And then, Mr. Mayor, just as a headline, because I know what's going to happen, so you all finish compensation, then someone's going to immediately say, motion adjourned, and you're going to be out here. So I'm getting in ahead of this. You all may want to consider amending your agenda, adding the railroad, and giving staff some guidance, because, quite frankly, I have to respond to the railroad in some form or fashion. If you don't want to give them any feedback at this point, that's your option. But it would be nice at some point if I can give some direction back, because, you know, they gave us an extra 30 days, so we're sort of on borrowed time, but thank you.
I want to make this comment, and y'all hash it out and tell me what you think, but I haven't met with anyone personally from the railroad. And I would like to facilitate that, David, and just meet with them. I don't distrust anything that you said or anybody else at this matter, but, you know, I would like to know that I at least had a chance at the table to talk to these folks one-on-one, and see if I can strike a deal. So, shoot me down, Council.
Well, you know, the whole time we've been dealing with them, we haven't even, we haven't had a full governing body, and I think it's important that they hear from the mayor, who is the face of the city. You were there when all this went in. I'm for whatever we can do with negotiating with them and trying to s-
Do we need anything on here for that?
Finagle these.
I'd just like to point out, too, that the person that we're talking about from the railroad, that is, their responsibility is dealing with elected officials primarily as a liaison with Norfolk Southern, so.
Governmental relations.
Just so that you can move forward, and I'm just throwing this out as an idea, to get you moving forward, would it be appropriate to have a motion to authorize the mayor and the city manager to meet with the Norfolk Southern people and to authorize them to enter into an agreement short of closing the Chief Street Crossing?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Now, you see why I brought this up?
Unanimous.
Ahead of Yucca.
I'll mention that Senator Mike Dugan has been, has presented himself to try to assist us also.
Let's get on to the Yucca thing, I think I'd like to hear from Councilman Best. He's the best at doing this.
Year-end compensation adjustment, aka Christmas bonus. We've got, each year, we try to do something special for the guys who work, and the ladies who work with the city, and it happens to be around Christmas, so obviously the word "Christmas bonus" has developed. My proposal is real simple, to give $500 to the full-time employees with a positive yearly review, and $250 to the full-time, part-time employees, and I forget what it was called the other night.
Twelve-month, part-time.
Twelve-month, or it was something else.
Permanent.
Permanent, there you go. Permanent, permanent. Now, full-time, part-time, that's the folks that work each week less than 29 hours with the city, and give them $250. The people who are just been re, just been hired with the city, and less than a year, give those folks $250. And the people that are, been hired by the city, that are part-time, and been here less than a year, to give those folks $250. And talking to some of y'all, you know, there's a lot of things that goes on, and a lot of people that do a lot of different ways, and some adjust it to the number of years you've been employed by the city, and we're associated with 2% for every year you taught school, so there's a lot of different ways of doing all these things. And this year-end compensation, as David calls it, that's fine, I don't care what you call it, I just want to see these folks get $500 at the end of the day.
And actually, you said, you didn't specify the amount of time, they could have been here a month on some of that.
If the people have not been here a year, and have not had a yearly review, and that's the only time you do it, is being here one year, then they will get $250.
So they would have to have had a review. A positive review, you said.
And a positive review from their, that makes, that makes a little, that makes a little difference, too. Now, with that being said, before we vote on this, we got one more thing that's not really tied into this, but we got to get it thrown out there. We probably need to think about meeting in January.
We're going to pick a date for our January meeting, aren't we?
January 3rd, I think, is the first Tuesday of, that we meet.
That is correct. That's right after we come back, because January 2nd would probably be a holiday.
And then, that means the Thursday before that is during Christmas break for some folks having their kids, going wherever. So, you know, it's just something that you may want to consider.
But talking about the year-end compensation thing, let me, I want to ask this question, I think David knows what I'm about to ask. What is the, have you totaled up how much this is going to cost?
No, because this sort of kind of changed from the work session. In fact, I have a question here, because I'm not so sure I understand. So I'm going to try to make sure that I can make hay of this. So, the proposal on the table was $500 for full-time, with obviously positive annual review. $250 for full-time permanent, no, correction, $250 for part-time permanent, all right? However, if they've been here less than a year, 250 for full-time, 250 for part-time. And the reason I'm confused is that means that regardless of your part-time status, it's all the same across the board. So did I understand that correct?
Well, in speaking with some of the folks about that, the part-time people are never, have never been compensated for holiday pay. When they're off on Christmas, if they're supposed to be working, they don't get compensated, they just, they're not working. I thought this may be a way to help those folks out. And it is, you're right, it is a change, but after hearing that conversation, the people that are part-time, you know, there's 12 holidays, they're not paid.
Shouldn't there be a period of time they should have been here as a part-timer? I mean, not-
The year, the yearly review.
Oh, so they got to be-
You get a six-month review, and then a yearly review, and after that yearly, that yearly review means that you've been there that one year.
That's a part-time also, part-time permanent, okay.
Is that clarified?
Yeah, basically, anyone below 12 months, that's a regular full-time or regular part-time, just get 250 no matter what, there's nothing tied to it. So what you're really saying is, all permanent, part-time, get 250 no matter what.
They have to have a review.
And the only caveat is the-
They have to have a police made it to six months.
Well, they had to have, you know, but it doesn't matter of, there's no time, because he said if they're below 12 months, they still get 250, so.
Review.
Yeah, but I'm still saying that if they're below 250, below 12 months, they're still getting the 250. So, so the caveat is, there's no real timetable affecting, certainly, everybody would have their six-month interim evaluation, so no part-time below 12-month, nobody below 12-month would have an annual review. The most that they would have would be their six-month interim. So that's why I'm saying, from an administrative standpoint, it's, 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 I can't make hay of it.
Well, just think, when we get all the pay, when we get this pay parity in order, which we're addressing, my goal is that we won't be doing this. We will give people a ham or a turkey, or a $50 public certificate, and we will have brought them up so that they're getting paid better throughout the entire year, which is a greater benefit than this at the end of the year. We've had people on the lower level that we have not paid them what they should get. There's other people with their training certifications, we are now starting to address that. So how long are we going to do this sort of thing?
Well, I mean, we look at this every year, so, but let's just get by tonight, to start Burl, do you have further clarification for the city manager, or do you think?
I think, you know, that's-
You should have at least had to have been here six months, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
You have to at least have gotten past that-
Anybody less than six months should not get a bonus.
Right. Okay. And then you're saying-
Clarify what you're asking?
Yeah, because on the 12-month, that means that no full-timer or part-time would get any compensation. The six-month is different, because you would have your interim evaluation, which is why I'd asked for the December 31st date, because that's when all evaluations have to be wrapped up. So if you're going to do full-time with the annual valuation, and then you do the part-time, there's no real caveat of changing the amount on the part-time, just the full-time, and those are six-month or more as of-
I don't know what he's saying.
December 31st. Pardon me?
I don't know what you're saying.
December.
Am I saying July?
Well, that's a six months.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I'm saying that, you know, basically, you had to be on the watch for six months as of December 31st.
I see, okay.
And I just want to make a comment, too. You know, I think it's important to understand that we're not using our money, this isn't Monopoly money, this is, you know, this is taxpayer money. And I have heard that from a couple of constituents, and I understand that completely. But with that said, you know, I made this comment in the work session, and I'm going to, you know, shout this from the rooftops as long as I'm in this seat. I never want us to manage the city budget on the backs of the employees here. You know, there are ways for us to make this budget frugal, and I think we need to compensate our employees a fair wage for a fair dose of pay. And, you know, I will always, you will always hear me say that. So I do not take that lightly, and that's why I asked the question about, you know, how much is this going to cost? Because it will cost, and I'm assuming we're going to take this out of that ever diminishing fund called the-
Unbalance.
Unbalance.
We're actually not going to try to, we're actually going to scrape across the board. I had the CFO look at every single department, and basically, we're going to, almost like a craps table, basically go out and pull together all the crumbs in order to, and with the numbers we ran, she thinks that she can make ends meet to do that.
So you do run numbers?
Well, yeah, yeah, but see, you change up the numbers. I said I had, I had some figures, we ran those.
Worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario, you're going to, you know, broom up all the crumbs and assemble them in some fashion, so we don't have to touch our fund balance.
Exactly. So I need to go back and do the calculations applied that, with the new one here.
We always say we're going to get the money from somewhere, so why can't we get the money from somewhere to give these people a decent something?
He just said he's going to find the money.
I will entertain a motion.
I'm talking about from what I'm hearing.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion.
To what, to do the bonus? Well, I get that now, so bear with me, make your motion, I'll second it.
Make a motion, we give full-time $500, everybody else $250.
Second motion.
Well, you didn't specify six months.
Six months. He just, what he said a while ago, I mean, that's-
Okay, what he said.
Have to at least have been here six months by December 31st.
31st.
Positive evaluation.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion and the second, before we vote on it? Okay. Mr. City Manager, do you understand the motion?
I understand that the motion is to award $500 per full-time employee with positive annual review, which means that they've been here over a year. $250 to everybody else, regardless whether it's a annual review or a six-month review effective December 31st, 2016. And because this will be done through the payroll, Uncle Sam will be taking his portion, unless the city agrees to true-up the taxes. But at this point, ho, ho, ho.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion?
What about the taxes he brought up? Ho, ho, ho.
Well, whoever made the motion would have to rescind the motion. I've got a motion and a second on the floor, so.
Or amend it.
The question is just whether or not this is a net $500 or $500 minus taxes.
I asked the CFO today, and I think what we have done in the past is that allow the individual people to do what they normally do about the number of dependents that they can claim, then the city will pick up the FICA. I believe that's what she said.
It'll be part of their earned income when they-
Correct.
File their tax return next year.
All right, bottom line is, you know-
They give them 500, and just go.
I don't have a problem with that, the bottom line is- I don't have a problem with that, you, you, the bottom line is, you can simply take, whatever they come, they, or they, they will simply say they got 10 dependents and, and get the bigger part of their, their bonus, and then at the end, when they file their income tax, it goes back to the number they, they gonna claim, so that's, that's been done now for the year and the day.
It's gonna be normal business, $500 and-
Take out taxes.
Yeah.
That's the motion and the second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any executive session items to discuss?
No.
Oh, good.
Wow. Okay, if not, I move to adjourn. I hear a move and a second.
Are you gonna think about moving the council meeting?
Yes, let's talk about the January meeting before I get ahead of myself.
Mr. Mayor?
What?
Mr. Mayor? Staff actually has the master counter that we have in draft form, we were going to bring it to you at the, the meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion, a second to adjourn. We are-
You didn't take a vote?
Yes.
All in favor? All opposed?
You always gonna have a vote.
We are adjourned.
Can't do that, that would be dictatorship.
I'll use my new gavel from now on. I used a cake cutter at the work session, so.
There you go.
That was fun, let's do it again next month.